Good evening. Welcome to the April 18th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing, council members, we have one item in amendment cover sheet that I would like to put, that would actually be under Old Business, right, Steve?
New Business.
Our New Business, okay. Just an added thing on the action taken last month, or last week, or two weeks ago. And this has to do with the Minnesota Public Safety on the SWIFT contract. Additionally, under New Business, we'll just make a few comments as we can that will be in regard to High Life Foods, okay? With that, we have the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes, Council Minutes of April 4th, which we commission April 5th, EDA April 10th, Library Board April 11th, Planning Commission April 11th, License Applications, Exempt Gambling Permit, WML Cobras Youth Football, October 21st, 2023, and the regular bills. Council Action or questions first?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions.
I'll second.
Excuse me, does that include the Content Agenda approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that carries. Department heads? That's a quick one there on the agenda. Proclamations. We have National Library Week, April 23rd to 2023. We have a council member who would wish to read that, please. And a volunteer will be the council member that is on that board as a liaison.
Okay.
Is that the right one? Nope. I'm sorry.
Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passion and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best lives. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regarding, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, and social economic status. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs, collections that are as diverse as populations they serve and ensures equity of access for all. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their community and continually expand their collection services and partnerships. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers and small businesses and enterprises. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connections, advancing understanding, civic engagement, ensuring economic goals. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joined library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota that this, the week of April 23rd to 29th, 2023, is proclaimed National Library Week. All residents are encouraged to explore the wealth and resources available at the library by visiting online or in person.
Thank you, Dennis. I mean, I assume that that was a good introduction as a motion by you?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make that motion, yeah.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Dennis and seconded duly by Marv. Any discussion? I will ask for a roll call, please.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Espen.
And I would like to add a couple items here in the library report, is that there were 70 people that participated in the adult winter reading program. The total number of books read by those participants was 1,370 books. So that's quite a success by them. So this is National Library Week and coming up here. So a couple items to just relay to the council and to the public is on the 24th is the Right to Read Day, on the 25th, National Library Workers' Day, on the 26th, Library Outreach Day. Take Action for Library Day follows on the 27th. So the library staff, they're planning stages on how to commemorate these days in the library so, with Plum Creek Library System. So make sure you check out the library during the week, okay? Thank you very much. Next, we have Drinking Water Week, May 7th to the 13th, 2023. I do believe Ryan's going to come up to the table, please. And if somebody cares to introduce the resolution, that was in your packet, I would appreciate that.
I would introduce the resolution.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Marv, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? And before I take that vote, I will read it myself because I like water and I like good drinking water. So in appreciation of the city water department, as introduced and seconded, whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, hygiene needs, for quality of life of our citizens and joy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure. Communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps, that is vital. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shown the light of the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the citizens of city, of our city, are called upon to protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water service by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that the week of May 7th to 13th, 2023, is proclaimed as Drinking Water Week. All residents are encouraged to help protect our source waters, practice water conservation, and thank our local water operators for ensuring clean, safe drinking water for our community adopted by the council this 18th day of April, 2023. Roll call, please.
Grunig.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Okay, and don't leave too soon because I got something else to present to you, too. Ryan is now going to talk about the, I believe, the Annual Consumer Confidence Report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, obviously, Ryan Anderson, Water, wastewater superintendent. I just want to start with, thank you guys for your support, and I want to give my guys, my crew some recognition, Eric Ward, Chad Brand, Steve Willard, and Brandon Paplo. They do an excellent job, take a lot of pride in their work, and I believe it shows with the quality of what we've got around here. Thank you. In your packet, you'll find the Community, Consumer Confidence Report. This is a yearly report. It's basically the culmination of the testing we do every year with the Minnesota Department of Health. A large majority of the stuff that's on this report comes from a representative from the department. She comes down and takes quarterly samples, and most said, most of the, most of the results are from those samples. I don't know if you guys want me to just highlight some stuff, or if you got any specific questions, however you want me to handle it. Okay, so I'm, yeah, I'm just going to start with kind of the page one, just brief summary, kind of talks about what we've got for our wells. We've got 87 to 142 feet deep wells, eight of them, in the ordinary buried, unconfined quarterary buried artesian and quarterary water table aquifers. Like I said, the rest is just kind of an overview. I will say right now that this, this report is available to the public. Anybody who wants to take a look at it can get on the, is there, did they get a link on the city's website, Steve? Okay, I'm not sure about that. I do know that you can go to the Minnesota Department of Health, Google MDH, Consumer Confidence Report, and you can put in Wyndham, Minnesota, and download a copyright right on, in the internet, or contact myself, or anybody I would think at City Hall could help get you ahold of that, too. So, yeah, just going to quick overview of the results. We haven't had to do lead and copper in, well, we didn't do it last year. We had done it the previous couple. The results are very favorable, shows very, very little, I'm not going to say insignificant because they want zero lead, but the very low, low levels of lead and copper in our, and the most basic cause of that is generally in the plumbing in the homes, not in, not in the water that we're putting out. It's probably coming from fixtures in the home. Inorganics, nitrate, barium, and radium, all very low. There's not a single contaminant on the list that's above the EPA's action level. No concern with anything. Let's see, page four is contaminants-related disinfection. So this is, our disinfection is chlorine, disinfect, chlorine disinfection, sorry. These are all byproducts of using chlorine as disinfection, THMs, HAAAs, and total chlorine itself. Everything falls well within a range, acceptable ranges. Obviously, you want enough chlorine in the water to disinfect, but we sure try to keep it from, we don't want your tap water to smell like chlorine either, so I think we do a pretty good job of controlling that and still getting the benefits of it. Um, is that the same page?
Yep.
Gotcha, skipped it. All right, as you may or may not know, fluoride is mandated to be added to drinking water, basically for dental reasons. The range is .5 to .9 parts per million. Let's see where we land. Highest single result is .9, and our range is right in, within that acceptable limit. So everything's going good on that rate. That was lowered, what, three years ago, Dominic? Does that sound right? When they lowered the fluoride limit, I believe, anyway. As I said, there's obviously some mixed feelings on chemical usage, but that's, that one's mandated, and we're landing where we need to be with it. Yeah, I guess the last, last one on the list is sodium sulfate. Did I skip over? Okay, all right. Sodium and sulfate, again, everything's, everything's well within, well within limits. Guess, I don't know, there's not much more to do with the report than that. It does give you some, some description of what's, what those contaminants are, and I don't know, you'd have to go online to see the actual health effects of them, but anything specific, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or anybody can see me at the office, or give me a call, and I can do my best to point you in the right direction also.
Any questions for Marv?
Ryan, one of the things in the news lately is this discussion about PFAS in water. What can you tell the public currently about PFAS in Wyndham water?
So I can tell you that we have just started testing for it. The problem with PFAS is it's out there in the news, but we really don't know what the dangers are. I mean, obviously, it's a forever chemical, anything like that, we're going to try to avoid. I can't give you any, any numbers of our levels, but I have not been alarmed to any issues with them. I want to say they've set preliminary limits. That's, I'm trying to think of an email we got a little while back. Was that EPA or was that? I think EPA has set preliminary, but Department of Health has not. Maybe that's, I'm trying to think of which way that, that is, but that's all I can tell you for now, anyway.
That's very much what I heard, too. Our area is not really subject to the PFAS contaminations, but it's a wait-and-see before we can say anything official. Good question. Okay, any questions for Ryan on that? Except, do you want to turn your mic off a minute? Okay, thank you. I want to skip over just for a moment to read something else that we received in the mail. This is a certificate of commendation. This wastewater treatment facility operational award is presented to Wyndham Wastewater Treatment Plant and its staff in recognition of exceptional compliance with its Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, NPDES/SDS wastewater permit during the 2022 review period. Your dedication to protecting Minnesota's water is duly recognized and appreciated by the state of Minnesota, signed by Katrina Kessler, MPCA Commissioner in Minnesota. So I'll give you that, too, to hang up on your wall.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for Ryan? Okay, thank you. Ryan, you sure could, as just a touch base for the council. I'll let you do it. I'm not going to tell my side of the story.
All right. Well, it's fairly fitting, being Water Week and all, I guess, it kind of, kind of fits right into that. The mayor and myself and a couple members of each of our staff met with the DNR today out at headquarters here in town. We also had a representative from Poets and, who am I missing? Scott Brinker with Truck Wash. So what it's, what they're calling it is the Wyndham Camp, which is an acronym for Community Aquifer Management Partnership. Basically, it's kind of to get ahead of the game. We're looking at water needs, future water needs, where we sit currently, what we're, what we're looking for in the future, and just trying to get a, kind of get ahead of the ballgame, make sure that we've got enough water available, safe, good drinking water for, for future, for now and for future growth. So it's, it's kind of a small group, community group at this point. We're planning on keep moving forward with, with the meetings. Got a few ideas that we threw out today, we'll be looking into. I don't know, anything I should add to that?
No, I think that was very good comments. Appreciate all the entities that were there to join. We're all connected in some way with our aquifers, and so it's kind of, as Ryan said, a partnership to get together, talk about things, promoting water conservation, different things like that, and addressing long-term needs for our kids and their kids. So, yeah, I think that was a good synopsis of that. Thank you, Ryan. All right, take care. Bye.
State Airport Improvement Grant Agreement that was in your packet.
Steve is going to take that one.
Sure. There's a copy of grant agreement in the packet along with a letter. We need to update our airport zoning. Our airport zoning is from the 1970s and before MinDOT Aviation and FAA will sign off on future projects. They want us to update the zoning. And this is a state project, so it is 70% state-funded, and it will be then 30% are funded by the city. The request or the amount estimated is $48,000, so that'd be $14,400 to the city of Wyndham. A chunk of that has been kind of set aside from last year's CIP, and the rest of it, we're hoping to be able to get out of the operational budget at the airport, but we'll kind of see how that goes. If we fall maybe a little short, we may be asking for some 24 budget authority for that, but right now, we're hoping to have that covered. So as you can see in the packet, the original letter that went out to Deed was dated December 7th of 2021. So these do take some time to plan and get into coordination into the queue, so I guess if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Any questions for Steve? If not, we do have a grant agreement that needs to be acted on by the council. Councilists take action?
I would introduce a resolution authorizing to execute Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement for the airport.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Marv, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Sounds like we pretty much anyway have the budget covered, so.
Best we can.
Yep, best we can right now. So with that, hearing no questions, I'll ask for a roll call.
Benson.
Yes.
Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
And that resolution carries. Thank you. Okay, personnel recommendation as seen in your packet. This is regarding Officer Devon Copperood to Police Sergeant Scott.
Scott Peterson, police chief. In your packet, there's a memo in regards to our sergeant's position. Hiring process was held, and Officer Devon Copperood was selected to be the sergeant. He's been with us for almost nine years. He has a bachelor's degree from Bemidji State. We think he's going to make a fine addition to our command staff and would ask for your approval.
Counsel, any questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Devon Copperood for this position.
I'll second.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Ginny, to approve as recommended by Chief Peterson to hire Devon Copperood as our police sergeant. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks a lot.
Next, we have a guest here this evening. Dennis is going to end on behalf of Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, a letter of support. And so that's been in your packet, but Dennis, I'd like you to explain this a little bit. The council will see that there is a letter, letter of recommendation and support that's included for the city council. Your action on this would include that of me signing that letter. So please listen, and we'll be happy to hear from you, Dennis.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Dennis Warburg. I've affiliated with the Des Moines Valley Chapter of the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, and I'm here tonight to ask for the city's support in application for a project involving the Wyndham School, the Environmental Learning Center. Learning Center was established back in, I believe, around 1970, and it was used extensively for a certain period of time. I know it was very active when I first moved to Wyndham in 1983, and it has slowly declined, and it has got to a point where it is not anything more than a brush pile and reed canary grass that's out there. The school applied for a grant from the Toro Foundation, and they received a grant of $100,000 to improve the Learning Center. The main thing that they were looking at was establishing some form of an outdoor classroom, as well as replacing the bridge that lays, that goes across Perkins Creek. Well, it ended up being that the bridge is a $40,000 project by itself. So that is going to take a very large percentage of it. Deer Hunters Association, part of our, our policy is habitat improvement education. Those are two of our pillars. A couple of people from our chapter have been talking about that particular area because it is, it has potential of some real important species out there and a good place that not only kids, but citizens of Wyndham can use. So I, knowing a little bit about some of the grants that are out there, the one grant that we're talking about doing is a Conservation Partners Legacy Grant, which is funded by the tax dollars that was passed back in 2008, I believe, and we added a quarter of a percent or 3/16 of a percent to it, and we can apply for those grants. So Jacob Gross, who works for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, went through and kind of put together the portion that is in your packet, and I am in the process of readying that grant, and we will submit it. The grant has to be in by May 8th, and we probably won't see approval on that. They'll give us approval, if they're going to approve it, we'll get a verbal approval on it, but we have, we cannot spend any money until we have signed documents from the grants that I've done in the past. That's usually about three months after the initial application. So we're looking at, at not, probably not being able to do a lot this fall, although the Toro Company is starting to do the work on that. They are going to start a cleanup on, I believe it's June 22nd, or something like that is what their day is to clean that up. But with the map up there, that's up there right now, you can see the big, big blue line is actually the relocation of Perkins Creek. That is where it is today. If you look a little bit farther down, you see a meandering small blue line. That is the actual original creek bed that was before they dug the ditch to relocate it. So that four-acre mosaic is what we're looking at starting with right away. That's all reed canary grass. And those of you that are not familiar with reed canary grass, it's a grass that grows in wetlands, it has absolutely no benefit to wildlife, and it is a very serious fire hazard. Because when it dries, it becomes ignitable very easily. It's got a very, very heavy fuel load to it, and once it starts, you virtually cannot put it out. So us looking at that, what we want to do is go in and around the edge of that area where there is trees, we want to go in and remove some of those old ones. There's a lot of old willows in there, there's old cottonwoods in there that have reached a maturity. a maturity. They're starting to fall down. If we've got kids out there, you know, actively participating in that, we don't want to have any hazards in that area. So we're looking at cleaning up some of that and then go in and restore that wetland, or well, actually, the field, restore that by going in mowing and herbicide on the reed canary for the remainder of this year, do the same thing next year until fall. And then next fall, we want to go in there and disturb the soil and replant native grasses as well as native flowers or forbs. Okay? So what that's going to do is going to bring back the ability to have that land actually have some value to it other than just something that is growing. Okay? Also, in the forested area, if you look at the trees around there, the slashes on that, there's a lot of invasive species in there. Buckthorn, which is very hard to get rid of, and it has absolutely, virtually no value at all for anything. So we're thinking about going in there. We're also, we're going to be using our personnel as well as hiring contracts to come in, cut, and treat it so that it doesn't come back. Buckthorn, in big areas that I know of that we have done buckthorn removal, it's usually a four-year process in order to kill the plant. It is just very, very aggressive type of a plant. It doesn't take much of a root, two to three inches of root that gets exposure to sunlight, and it'll take off and grow another plant. So that's our plan on doing that. This is about a $35,000 project to do it, to do it and do it right. And it's a four-year project. We've got funding with the CPL grants, the funding of those grants, you've got three years to spend the money. So we'll have that money, and we can spend it over that time. I'm also going to put into the plan that we may be doing some planting of native shrubs in there, and if we have money to do that, we can do it. If I don't put that into my plan, then I got to go back and write an amendment to the plan to do that if we have some extra dollars. So I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Quite a list of accomplishments you're going to do for actually quite a minimal amount of money, but I'm sure that, you know, your participation and your people will donate that time. So very impressive. Council questions?
Didn't we have a fire out there last fall in that area? Perkins Creek out in there, I thought we had something going on. That would help potentially take care of that fire issue out there, wouldn't it? Whereas dead trees and stuff like that.
Actually, there is a tremendous amount of fire load in that whole area, because there's a lot of trees that are down, and when those trees go down, they just lay there down there in the bottom, and you get a fire that comes into that, and they sit there and they smolder, because you've got that wood laying on the ground, it's not, you know, really dry, so it'll stay there and last a long time. I will also add that this is not the first CPL project that I have been involved in. This is probably, I'm just counting in my head, probably seven or eight that I have been involved with, so it's not a process that I am not aware of how to do. And I think that this is really a good project, and it's a good project. Working with Superintendent Frank and talking to her about it, and when we presented to the school board last week, it was unanimous approval on that. And after that, we had two of the principals come up and say, "We want to get kids involved in getting into the outside." You know, the other thing that I didn't talk about was the carbon imprint or green stuff that we got. I mean, we've got a lot of green out there that really is not generating a lot of CO2 to help our ozone. By changing that, we can put more into it, so.
Just one question I have for me. It's not going to help us eliminate deer population, is it? Or will it?
Eliminate? No.
No. Okay.
Honestly, you may actually enhance a little bit, but the good thing is, the good thing is if you put plants in there that deer are going to eat, they're not going to be as apt to go to the flowers of the neighbors.
Okay, you sold me on that. Yeah, right. Guaranteed, I think he said. So, okay. Any more questions? Council action?
I'd make the motion to approve the letter of support because we enthusiastically support this project.
I'll second.
Ginny, that was enthusiastic yourself. Motion was made in the second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dennis, for coming tonight and explaining that to us.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the support. And all of you know, anytime it's you're working with governmental agencies, that the more support that you can get, the better off, that it will make your project go. So thank you very much.
Makes sense to me. Thank you. Okay, mayor appointment. Oh, HRA. That is my recommendation. I did talk with Joel, with an L, Lacan, and he is willing to fill that position that's opened up on the HRA board. So my recommendation is to appoint Joel Lacan. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve Joel Lacan's appointment.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. And Scott, thank you for the second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. Okay, Steve, did we want to go through?
Yep. At your spots, there was a handout. Mayor introduced it at the start of the meeting. We have a joint powers agreement with Bureau of Criminal Apprehension Services for our work in that area. As you know, we recently changed our prosecutor from the Cottonwood County to the Jackson County, and so we need to amend our joint powers agreement with the state simply to remove Nick Anderson's name and insert Kristi Myron's name. Everything else will remain the same, so it's more just a point of contact change in this joint powers agreement. So that, our agreement with the prosecution services starts May 1st. The state kind of pushed this along and got it done, and we got it a little bit after the packet went out on Friday, but because we start May 1st, we'd like to get this taken care of. So we're asking for your approval of this contract amendment to swap out Nick Anderson for Kristi Myron.
Any questions first? Hearing none, is there a motion? And this is just a motion to approve the amendment.
I'll make the motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
Motion, Jim, second, Marv, to approve the amendment of the name switch through the joint powers agreement. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members have received a couple emails regarding High Life now. High Life Foods, a valued member of our business community here in Wyndham, and wanted to just touch base a little bit on this. No new specifics. I'm not going to go into that detail, but I will say that we had a phone call from Governor Walz this morning and encouraged the city to communicate with our commissioners, Department of Ag, which we did have at a meeting. Commissioner Thom Peterson was here in person. Commissioners of Deed and I believe PFA, or Deed and Agriculture Deed.
Agriculture Deed and PFA.
And PFA, yes. Were the three that are being reached out to. And so Steve had this afternoon set up the points of contact with people, with those folks, and also reached out to members that either myself or Steve has contacted or both of us. They include quite a list. They include, of course, Governor Walz, and I'll try to remember everybody, our senators, one being Senator Klobuchar, who actually called me at home shortly after this event was announced. Senator Weber, Representative Fogelman, Representative on a federal level, Michelle Fishbach, and their associated folks that are employees of them. Did I miss anybody, Steve? Probably, yep, Commissioner Thom. We talked about Senator Smith, and there are plans underway now to have future discussions, roundtable-type discussion, and of course, High Life was copied in on that as well. So we've been communicating. I thank Steve for his assistance in this, and, you know, we take this seriously on behalf of the City of Wyndham. We, I would say, as Steve mentioned in emails that went out to the council, we're optimistic that this can be resolved in a positive manner, and I think we should keep on that same track. So with that, Steve, anything more to add?
Just that we've also been in contact with PIC and Deed and workforce development, so they're setting up resources if and when there are any workforce reductions or things like that. So they've been told to kind of wait until there's a formal announcement before anything springs into action. So that's kind of where we're sitting on the workforce side of it with state resources and anybody else we've talked to, so. We don't have a whole lot of information with the company. I mean, pretty much, we've learned on Facebook a couple of things that we didn't know, so there's just not been a whole lot of information forthwith, so.
If you have any questions, we probably can't answer them, but if you want to ask them, that's fine. But thank you all, council members, for reading your emails, your comments if you want to make to Steve or I are fine, and, you know, we just want to do what we can to support any potential change, but in the positive, of course. So this is, we welcome the call of Governor Walz today, and he took immediate action of preparation and getting ahold of the other commissioners that potentially could be involved. Okay? That's our report. Any other new business? Any old business? Council comments? Scott, you want to go first?
Just with the weather coming up and stuff, like I said last time, just be careful, or not be careful, be courteous of your neighbors. If you see an elderly person, they need help in the yards picking up stuff or just taking care of themselves, or be a good neighbor and help out your fellow people, and just with the weather coming around, try to help yourself and just take care of Wyndham. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ginny next, because I want to hear all about recycling events, and I heard there was a huge line out at the landfill for the half-price day. So any comments?
Yes, I was not out there. I heard two of the lines, and I heard that a lot of people were thanking the staff that were all involved and people that volunteered to help with that process. But yeah, I wasn't out there or part of it, so I don't have any firsthand knowledge. And then we have our event coming up for the citywide cleanup on Saturday, May 20th. I actually will be Friday on Kaleidoscope to talk about that. Just reminding people that it's 10 items that you can have in front of your house, your bulky items, and then we're going to have two different pickup locations on each side of town where you can bring your other things to dispose of in dumpsters or trucks, whatever they have from hometown, set up in those locations. So your big things that are too big for you to manage, you put in your yard, and the smaller things, you can take to these sites and get rid of yourself, and then there's no limit on that amount. You just need to be a City of Wyndham resident to be able to bring your things there. And so we're hoping that this will be a good event. You know, we're trying this out as something a little new. We're trying not to have so much of those humongous piles of things in yards for months on end that, you know, rain, snow, whatever gets to before they get picked up. So we're really telling people to wait until closer to that May 20th date before you start putting anything out. And also just trying to make it safer for hometown, who is the vendor that comes around and picks up all that stuff. When you think about, you know, mirrors, you know, there's a lot of times, there's stuff out there that can be hazardous to the people picking it up, and so we just want to make sure that we're cautious on that and being safe in our community too on the things that we put out. And then again, a reminder, there isn't going to be appliance and electronics picked up, so the old TVs, that kind of stuff is not in, dishwashers, that kind of stuff will not be picked up at your curb. That stuff that you have to arrange with the landfill to pick up or find a different appliance person that will pick that up for you. There will be mattresses, though, and you can buy tags for the mattresses at City Hall, but we'll have more information coming up because we have a little bit of time yet, so you can get ready, but do not put your things out yet.
Jim?
I remember what that environmental center looked like years ago before most people, but it sure has gone downhill, and it's going to be a good thing to get it redone.
I would just say that I was one of those guys that sat in a line for almost an hour to save five bucks. But no figure. Anybody driving the highway today or yesterday would have noticed that there's some activity going on at Lumen Park, so that project has started, and that's great news. Then I'd also like to just mention, in the last seven to 10 days or so, there's been a lot of tragedy in the news in regards to police officers. And I would just mention to Scott Peterson that if he needs anything to keep his officers safe, we need to hear about it as far as training or equipment or whatever, because we need to keep our police officers safe.
Very good comments and well said, Marv. Thank you. Dennis?
I have nothing.
Dennis?
I have nothing.
Okay. Thank you. I had to give you a bad time, though. Steve?
No, not tonight. Thank you.
The mayor's not going to say anything, except I think the street department did a good job removing the snow this time. It didn't last too long. Thank you, Mother Nature, for getting rid of that stuff fairly quickly. And one last reminder, it could happen again, but... So to our residents, thank you. Been having some phone calls. Thank you for that, and we are going to be done, and we're adjourned by unanimous consent.